Leads us on to agenda item one, apologies for absence and declaration of substitute members.
Apologies, there is a full complement of members, so all eight members are present, no substitutes.
Thank you. Item two, disclosure of interest, to deal with any disclosure by members of any disclosure procurnary interests and interests other than procurnary interests as defined under the C4 Town Council Code of Conduct and Localism Act 2011 in relation to the matters on the agenda. Anybody? I've, I personally have got an interest on LW stroke two zero stroke zero eight four nine six Beacon Drive. I'm a personal friend of one of the objectors and to inform everybody, I will be handing over the chair to the vice chair councillor Richard Honeyman. I will introduce the item four on the agenda and then, and then we'll hand over to councillor Honeyman. Agenda item three, public participation, to deal with any questions or brief representations from members of the public in accordance with relevant legislation and C4 Town Council policy. In accordance with Town Council policy, members of the public wishing to speak on individual planning applications may do so immediately before each planning application. So at this point, it's on non-planning application concerns, if any members of the public have any questions. No. So we move on to planning applications, item four, planning applications received in week commencing Monday, the 18th of January, and I now pass over to councillor Honeyman to announce this application.
Thank you very much, Chair, and it'll be LW twenty oh eight four nine six Beacon Drive, change of use from a C3 dwelling house to a C2 residential institution to accommodate up to five children for Mrs El Wychel O'Ellis. So I think initially, who wants to actually be speaking on this particular item? Can you, anyone in the audits wants to speak on this item? Is there anyone, or is it, oh, so is that Bruce?
Yes, I will as well if necessary, thank you.
Is that Sharon as well, it's a British Sharon, okay, let's start with Bruce, you have up to about four minutes. And can you say who you are, where you live and, yeah, and?
The bossy Kingsmead Seaford. Now, I'm assuming that you have read all the letters that we have put in, so I'm not going to go through the detail of the letter, and if you haven't, I trust that you will do so. We have a couple of additional concerns, one of them being, as this is a commercial venture that is applying for change of use for some of our most vulnerable in society, we would expect very thorough scrutiny of any business plan, which I have yet to see. We're also slightly concerned that we saw on the Lewis Planning Application website comments made by a gentleman called Luke, who I think works for Lewis Planning, which would seem to suggest that it's already a done deal, which was a bit disconcerting. There have been previous applications by this applicant for another home, which was then withdrawn, or they didn't purchase it, we're not sure of the actual detail of the circumstances. But what then happened was the people who owned the home sold it with change of use for a much inflated price, and someone else who came in and who now runs the home, and so the local residents' objections and concerns were completely null and void at that time. So if this were to go ahead, we would ask that there were certain circum- conditions made in that if Rubicon Homes did not fulfil the purchase, it did not still have change of use, so it would revert back to a dwelling property, and if Rubicon Homes did secure the purchase, they would need to run it for a minimum of three years before it could be then resold, or it again would revert to a dwelling house. This is candidly because we don't have a lot of trust in the applicant, given the past experiences of our colleagues or our, not colleagues, but our community in Denton, who have not fared well since the change of use. As I said, they're the points I want to make, but if, I haven't, and I won't go through the points in the letter, which are the valid points for objection to the actual planning, because I'm trusting that you will read that in detail.
Very much, I'd, before I speak to someone else, just like you say, we're not making the decision tonight if this is going to go ahead, this particular application, it's, it's just, it's just where does one of the consultees, it's like a, almost like a spot check to just how we feel as a, as a local council, how we feel if, if, what we feel about this particular application. One thing I will say though, you can't really talk about the applicant like a character reference, that's not really part of, part of material planning consideration.
Well, I do understand that, but I think it just, it's something that worries us because we've seen what's happened. That's it.
You're not allowed to, but I will, I will put you put to the, to the planning officer, so if you can mute yourself now, please, thank you.
Thank you.
There's just a couple of things that have been mentioned there, which I should answer straight away before any other speakers start to, to make their case, and that's about the information from Lewis District Council and the mention of Luke, the planning officer. I don't know Luke, who's a planning officer there, but I'm assuming that there is one. The, what the applicant did is what most applicants or a lot of applicants are advised to do, but don't, which is to, they sought a pre-application report from the district council before they put the application in, in December, which you have to pay for. So there was a discussion with a planning officer, Lewis, for an indication of, of the merits of the application, if you like, and its chances of success. And the report back from Lewis is set out in full on the application form online. It, it, it may be easy to miss because it's in the last part of the application form, but there is quite a detailed report back from Lewis, set out on the application form, which briefly says that, that the council generally supports this type of application, that there is no policy relating to this sort of change of use, that the applicant should be prepared for objections on, on the grounds that the objectors have used in their, in their letters, and that the applicant will need to look carefully at a travel plan, which will be a condition, which would be a condition of any consent granted, and a, and a management plan as well, and various other comments about parking and use of the garage and things like that. So it may be easy to miss, but it, it has been on the website since the start, in, I think, is around about paragraph twenty-five of the application form. So, so there's no, nothing sinister, that, that what was implied was that it was a done deal. It's advice from Lewis District Council before the application went in, which the objectors were perfectly entitled to criticise, comment on as they wish. So, so that's that. There was a second matter, oh, about, about conditions for the, oh, the, the letters, sorry. Yeah, a lot of letters have been sent to Seaford Town Council as well as to Lewis. All the letters that have been sent to Seaford that haven't indicated that they've also been sent to Lewis, have been sent on to Lewis for posting on the council's website. That's where we expect our members to find the information on the applications. So we're assuming that the letters, the letters that were sent solely to Seaford have been sent on to the case officer at Lewis for posting on the website, and there are about fifteen objections on the website. And I, and maybe a few more objections have been received in all, but they, they do all cover, roughly cover the same issues. So I think members are au fait with all the issues that have been raised by, by the objectors. So, sorry to interrupt the, the speakers, but I thought I'd make the point about the pre-application advice, which needs, needed to be mentioned, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that, because obviously when, when, when the residents talk about other staff, it's quite difficult, you don't, you don't want to accuse them of doing something they haven't done necessarily, as they're just effectively doing their, doing their job. So who, was it, was it, who was going to be speaking next? It was Sharon, wasn't it? Was it Sharon?
It was, yes.
Okay, yeah, okay, would you like to speak then, please, now?
Thank you, I didn't get a chance to write a letter, and so I may well be repeating what you've yet to read or what you already are in possession for, but I.
Sorry, sorry, can you say where you live, please?
Thirty-eight Kingsmead. So I replicate the, the feelings and the concerns that Bruce does. And I just wanted to reiterate that, sort of going to and from Kingsmead on a regular basis, the safety issues I find around Colton Road and Beacon Drive already, without the addition of multiple vehicles that would be associated to a care home. At the moment, there's only about four vehicles that park in that area, and it's quite dangerous the way that vehicles have to always go on the opposite side of the road. It's like a little rabbit run, where most of the estate around Blanchington Pond, all that area around Furl Road, everyone seems to drive through Kingsmead to try and cut off the town centre. So it's already a really dangerous area, and that's my main concern, is that if there are children there, that either they would get knocked down, lots of dog walkers around this area, lots of old people, and it's quite concerning that there would be the amount of people in their vehicles parking in that area and causing further obstructions.
Okay, thank you, is that, is that everything, Sharon?
I think so, I mean, I have seen some of the letters that people have put in, and I would just be repeating what they've already said.
So I'll, I'll next go to Carol, you've put your hand up, you would like to speak. Carol Jackson.
Hi, yeah, I'm Carol, I live at number eight Beacon Drive, so directly next door to the house at number six. In addition, I mean, I put all of our concerns and mine and my husband's concerns in your letter, so I take it that you've all read all of those. In addition, can I ask you councillors, do you actually come out and visit the site? Are you, are you aware of what number six, hell, six Beacon Drive is situated on the corner?
Can I say something, you're, you're meant to be doing a presentation and they'll indicate when, when they actually speak, Carol?
Sorry?
For interest, I actually walked past your, your, your house about four o'clock this afternoon on my way home.
Okay.
I had a good look myself, okay, of the, the whole area and, and just weighed up, so, but no, it's not the time to have a little chit chat with the councillors, just do your presentation.
I'm not asking for a chit chat with the councillors, I'm just asking for a point of clarity, actually.
I'm sure, I'm sure.
It affects us deeply, and actually, we asked to meet with one of the councillors and they refused, so I'm just asking for a point of clarity here, because this does affect us, if this goes ahead, we have to move. So this, this does affect our lives quite considerably, I don't think that's a chit chat question, I think that's a point of clarity.
No, no, but it's, it's, sorry, it's, we have procedures we have to do as a town council and in committees.
Yeah, you have a lot of, you have a point.
Absolutely, yeah, that's right, there's quite a lot to it, so we have to keep.
I think you've got elections coming up, haven't you, quite soon?
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah.
Not, not town council ones, so, that's, that's in 2023.
Okay, I'll remember that then, if I'm still here.
Okay, okay, it says anything else, so I saw, I saw your letter, your, your detailed letter and your traffic surveys and everything, so I have, I have read everything.
About, yeah, I mean, this does really affect us, yeah, so hopefully you would have seen how close next door's driveway is to our bedroom window and how this is going to affect us.
Okay, no, that's absolutely fine, it's, you did, you did a detailed reply, I, I read it this morning. It was, it was well, well structured, it was, and all your concerns are clearly listed, so it's, I'm absolutely, absolutely fine. So at this stage, if you've got nothing, nothing, nothing to add, then you're okay, you don't want to say anything.
No, no, I will say no more chit chats, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Well, anyone else want to speak, anyone in favour of this, of this applicant? Dave Saunders. Go on.
Yeah, I would just like to say, we've been, well, I moved here a month ago because we love the close and we love the really quiet neighbourhood. I don't think I would have moved here if I'd have known about this application. But setting all that aside, my main question is, have you seen the email that I sent in on behalf of myself and a few other folk? Because I sent it on my company email, and I've had stuff back from people saying they haven't, it's gone into a junk box or whatever. So I sent it again today from my personal email, and I just want to make sure that you would have read it, because one of the questions I ask in that is, how, can the applicant, you know, be asked how on earth she can ensure that her, the eighteen equivalent full-time staff will park twenty minutes away at ten past seven in the morning and half past eleven at night, when they've got to walk twenty minutes to the nearest car park? So I suppose that's the biggest question, but we have posed lots of other questions that we'd like Lewis and yourselves to review.
Thank you, yes, I think all those details of the latter one is about, we'll come round, we'll come down to the management plans, that side of things, for the detailed staff, so just. Planning officer wants to say something?
Just to say that Mr Saunders's objection was posted online on the 23rd of January. I've got the, the list of objections on the Lewis District Council website, so.
Yeah, but I've, I've added to that since then by letter to Lewis and to yourselves on the fourth. I'm just concerned that that, those two letters didn't arrive, and I've sent them both again today. But no, I added to that on the fourth of February, having learned much more about how to evaluate these types of planning applications personally.
Well, the, the objection on the 23rd was put straight on to the council's website.
Yeah.
That's, that's obviously the best way of submitting an objection, because it bypasses all the other processes and goes directly on to the website.
Yeah.
If you sent a separate letter, then that should have been put on the website by now, but there may be a delay at Lewis putting things on to the website because of the obvious problems going on at the moment. If Seaford received a letter from you, an additional letter, it would have been sent on to Lewis directly to put on the website. Okay.
Okay, yeah, I just want to get some sort of feeling that you, on this planning committee, have seen my objections in the letter.
Absolutely, would you like to mention two other points, and if you've got something to add then, David?
No, I mean, all, all my points are really in the letter. My own person, the only personal point I would make is, you know, I moved here to retire after working for fifty-five years, and what I've got now is a house almost opposite, the, something that's going to generate quite a lot of noise. So, there we go.
Okay, thank you for that. Well, is there anyone else that wants to speak, I'll, I'll up to the committees.
You've got Michael.
Sorry, Michael, right, okay, thank you. Michael, would you like, we'd like to speak.
It doesn't mute, so I hope you can hear me. I'm Michael Benison, I live at fourteen Beacon Drive, just up the road from number six. And I've had some correspondence with Louise, El Wychel O'Ellis, and indeed with the council. I think what we're concerned about as residents, that we've seen no risk assessment of these premises, as they may relate to the changing to a children's home. There's been no fire risk assessment despite Louise promising it in the next day or two, and I've seen nothing, or really note regarding any application for registration to Ofsted, which again I've asked for, and I think these are important documents if we're considering this matter. Equally, I'd like to know what the county councils or town councils' policy is on maintaining housing stock within the district. I understand we've got a shortage of housing, and yet here we are, doing away with residential property, particularly for larger families. So that might, is one of my concerns. And the, the other concern is, what is the definition of amenity so far as the county council and the district town council are concerned? Because if we look at the Environmental Protection Agency, it defines noise pollution as unwanted or disturbing sound, explaining that sound becomes unwanted when it either interferes with normal activities such as sleeping or conversation, or disrupts or diminishes one's quality of life. Most of the residents around this neighbourhood are relatively elderly. We're getting a younger population, I must agree, as, as people move, move on. But it will have major consequences, in my opinion, on the overall health of the individuals around here. We may, we may say that the youngsters have problems, but equally, there's elderly residents around here. And just one other point that I want to make is, in the response to, or from, or to Louise, I think, from Lewis District Council, and bear with me while I quickly look it up, within my four minutes if I can, I was rather insulted by the remark from the planning. As you are aware from previous experience, it is not unusual for residents to raise such concerns. More often than not generated by lack of understanding on how the facility will be run. Well, I find that insulting. I was a police officer for thirty years, senior police officer, I dealt with children's homes numerous times. I know the problems they have, I know how they're run, and I know the problems that they have, and the residents have within the vicinity of them. So I must admit, there's a lot, I feel, we haven't been able to consider as residents. But I feel, certainly I made a lengthy application letter to you, and feel that everybody here will be severely disturbed by the change of use of this building. I think that's as much as I need to say, unless anybody wants to ask me anything.
No, you know, it can't be done that way, I'm afraid, we haven't suspended standing orders, so no, thank you for your contribution.
Well, that's fine, but I am concerned that we get comments like the fact that we don't understand, and we have a lack of understanding on how these places run. People can read how these places run, there is numerous, numerous documentation from various organisations, from the police, from the Howard League on penal reform. There's all sorts of papers people read, and I just find it insulting that we're saying we don't understand how these things run. That's it, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Michael, thank you for that. Is anyone else, is that, is that it for now? Lisa, are you trying to say something?
Yeah, hello there, me and my husband, yeah, we actually are, one of the families actually is come from Pleasant House.
So, so basically, we, we were actually.
Your second name, if that's right, first, you've got a second name.
E, E A D S hyphen Aylwood.
And whereabouts do you live?
We live directly, forty-eight, directly behind.
Number six.
Number six.
Right, forty-eight Kingsmead, that is, yeah.
Yeah.
Correct.
So, basically, we've got first hand on this because we actually lived at Mount Pleasant, and when this actually, they did it at that house, it didn't matter how much everybody argued about having it done, they still went ahead and did it, and it absolutely destroyed the whole place.
Area, yeah.
There was cars everywhere blocking people's driveways, it was dangerous, it was just an absolute nightmare. And we moved from there purely on one of those bases because of that. There was alarms going off all the time, the police were turning up, it was just, it was a nightmare. We lost about twenty thousand pounds on our house. Bear in mind, we sold, we had two properties up there, and we sold both of them, one of them we lost twenty thousand pounds on, the other one we sold before that. So, and we've now moved here with, we've got elderly mother-in-law, Lisa's, and father-in-law, they've got Alzheimer's and dementia. This, it will cause grief and problems for them, their mental health, they're not going to understand what's going on. We've just, literally just moved here, what, two, two years ago?
Yeah, took, took on the place for, for them for the future now, for their.
Yeah, and we spent an absolute fortune getting the place sorted out, and now we're going to lose money again if we can even sell it, because we literally will back right on to it, and also, one of the top bedrooms overlooks directly into our, our back of our property, right into our bedrooms and stuff. It's just, yeah, it's not, it's not good. Also, I know you said about you walked by, which is great, I'm glad that you did. However, most people don't get home around here till sort of half five, six o'clock, some even later. And I can tell you now that if I walked out there, there's five cars along this park just here, right next to this junction, and because we live on the bend of the other side, if you like, the bus route comes around, the buses have to stop, almost come to stop, and it is just, it's dangerous. And you're expecting the children in an environment that possibly has got mental or some sort of problems. They got out, you know, it's so dangerous around here, because like the other people said, it's a cut through. People drive around here so fast.
We've seen nearly so many crashes.
Yeah, it happens all the time, and, you know, so, but again, we would just repeat the same as what everybody else is.
But we have had so turned a bit because we've just come from there.
Just come from it, quite literally, and.
Such a shame, we'd just say.
And, yeah, and we loved our bung glove up there, and I'm quite, I mean, I could even go back through my footage, because bear in mind that I'm a YouTuber, so I can quite easily go back through my footage and find probably videos of the alarms going off, the police turning up, yeah, it's, it's a nightmare. Anyway, that's it, thank you.
Thank you very much for your contribution. Well, I think that's everyone who wants to speak, so I shall open it up to the, the committee, who would like to start? Councillor Borman.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Just before I came into the meeting, there's actually now twenty-two objections on Lewis District's planning portal. Just want to comment to Michael regarding Ofsted registration. They wouldn't be able to register with Ofsted until they've received planning permission and have everything in place. So they wouldn't be able to apply for the Ofsted registration until they had it all in place, then they would sort that out, and I know that because I used to be an Ofsted registered person for a nursery setting.
It would be rather, rather nice if Louise Wychel, rather than put a sort of general report.
Is there, sorry, can you mute yourself, please, this is not a general chit chat, it's a formal meeting, sorry.
So, and I don't, can't respond to that then?
No, I'm sorry, you're not allowed to. Thank you very much, Michael.
Okay.
Thank you, Chair. Also, yes, we do need children homes, because there are vulnerable children in our society that need this extra support. But I totally agree with the residents' objections with regard to, there is not the amenities at that end of the town. Further in the town, there's a lot more amenities for the youth and things, so it would be better situated in the main town than out of town. With regards to the parking, that is also a major issue around there. My in-laws live just around the corner in Tudor Close, so I regularly visit the area. The parking coming down that road, main bus routes, buses are always struggling to get past, and additional cars there would cause additional problems, that's all I'd like to say for now, thank you.
Thank you very much, Councillor Borman, anyone else next? Well, I missed someone, is anyone else want to speak from the, from our committee? Go on, Geoff, planning officer.
But just on the comments that have been made. Mr Benison's comments about Ofsted have been answered. There are also comments about a lack of a fire risk assessment. That's not really a planning consideration. You can't refuse a planning application like this on the basis that there's a lack of a fire risk assessment. That we have to be dealt with by other agencies once, if and when it's up and running. You can express that concern to the case officer at Lewis because she will be doing a detailed report. Maybe for committee on this application. It all depends on Lewis's decision as to whether it goes to committee for a decision or is a delegated decision. But you can't refuse an application on the lack of a fire risk assessment. And the other point, um, generally, I think the, the lack of parking is obviously a concern, is always a concern. Every, it seems to be a concern for every resident regarding new development. In this case, if it does, if it is recommended for approval, it'll be recommended on the basis of a, an approved travel plan. Uh, there's a lot of um doubts about travel plans as to whether they can be enforced. Uh, I've come across travel plans in the past for big organisations which are extremely difficult to enforce because they involve car sharing, which is something which people seem to want to avoid at all costs. In this case, with a small establishment of five staff or a roll, five staff on a rolling shift basis, and the possibility, if it does go ahead, of incentivising staff for either parking well away from the house or using public transport or sharing a car that's incentivised, then with establishment of this small, it should be much easier to enforce a travel plan. So as far as recreation is concerned, that is a valid concern. It's in the middle of a residential, large residential area with very little ready access to um open space recreation that's needed. So that's a valid concern. But parking is, especially with the ability to park two or three cars on the driveway, that it's an easy concern to raise because parking, on-street parking is always a concern of any resident. There's very, very few places with adequate on-street parking. But as I say, they will have to, if it goes ahead, devise, agree, adhere to a travel plan. And that should be more straightforward in a small establishment like this rather than a larger establishment where they often go completely, they often get completely ignored and not enforced in my experience.
Thank you very much for that, Geoff. Any councillor want to add anything? Any councillor that make?
Thank you, Chair. Um, I just would like to say, um, when I first saw this application, I had reservations certainly, but then I tried to rethink it and thought, well, do you know what? Uh, if it's, if kids are being looked after on a one-to-one basis, so there's one adult responsible for each child. And if there are four children in the home, um, and it's a reasonably sized house, I thought, what's the difference between uh, you know, a family moving in with four kids who might be rowdy anyway, with only two adults to look after four children? Um, okay, I take these children do, will have uh certain needs and uh difficulties and I understand that and I take on board everything that has been said. And also, I think I do have to be very aware that this amount of objection from residents carries a huge amount of weight. Uh, and I take on board the fact that maybe the area is not given, you know, for children's home, but we do have to accept that just because a neighbourhood has mainly older people in it, if the capacities of the houses is such that you could have families there, you may well have families moving into an area and there might be four kids who might be teenagers and they might be quite loud and noisy. Uh, and, you know, the same things would apply of overlooking to any children in any garden who might be overlooked by neighbours or whatever. So I feel that some of the objections don't stand up, but I think the majority of them do. So I will be taking that into consideration. And I rather feel that we perhaps ought to not support this, this application myself. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else who wants, who'd like to add to what councillor Make said? So you're not proposing, are you councillor Make, at the moment? Or you'd like to hear somebody else speak, won't you? You're waiting for other councillors to speak?
I was offering the floor to anybody who might want to speak. Um, if you ask for someone to propose, I might do that.
Okay, anyone else want to speak? At the moment, we're not going too far at the moment with if we are going to object, we do need two people to object or if no one wants to talk about it at all. Councillor Borman, come back.
Yeah, I'll come back. I will propose that we object to this application. Um, obviously, there's lots of grounds that residents have actually made. Um, but also that I'd like added to that, that if, when it goes to Lewis, that it actually goes to the planning committee um rather than it being an officer recommendation, just so that residents have still got another chance to put their objections to another committee.
Okay, well, we can request that, can't we, Geoff? But it's not guaranteed, is it? It would go to the planning committee.
Yeah, I think the rule is that if it's if it's considered to have strong planning reasons to go to committee, then it will go to committee. And the number of objections is quite significant, obviously. And the planning, I don't think the planning issues are so clear-cut that the officer would would uh succeed as appropriate for delegation. But if we say that it should go to committee and there are twenty plus objections to back that up, I think it will. It, will it be of any use if I list the issues which the main issues which have been brought forward by the objectors?
Would you like to, Geoff? Obviously, like the price value of homes is obviously not viable, isn't it?
If, obviously, it's been proposed that you, you object, if I go through each of the issues, then members can say whether they want those, or councillor Borman can say whether she wants those issues to apply to her proposal. Is that okay?
Yeah, that's, that's fine.
Uh, traffic problems, um, parking problems, which are obviously separate from traffic problems, but slightly connected. Uh, security and police problems, noise and disturbance, uh, lack of, or inadequacy of testimonials and supporting information from the applicant. Inadequate uh uh, open space and facilities for children in the, in the immediate area. And the last one is not really a planning issue, but one that's been raised by several objectors. That's the, the fact that it will make the area less desirable and reduce house prices. Uh, and it's acknowledged that not every resident has raised that point, but it's been raised by quite a few. Those are the eight issues which I've listed. Uh, so if that helps members' discussions regarding a possible objection, then I'll, I'll leave it for discussion.
I think all of the above.
So how do, the bit discovered of the price of the value of properties, Geoff, we know, we know they'll discount that anyway, but we can leave it in. Is that what you're trying to say?
Well, I'm saying those are the eight issues which have been flagged up by residents. Um, perhaps the noise and disturbance and the the effect of general amenity, it's sort of connected to making the area less desirable. Because that's a phrase that a couple of residents have used, making the area less desirable. Perhaps it's, it's closely connected to the effect, the general effect on amenity, noise, disturbance, additional comings and goings, et cetera, et cetera. It's a sort of global type of reason. So, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't make, I wouldn't recommend making any reference to reduction in house prices in an objection because it's patently not a planning issue as we realise, but from, you know, previous discussions we've had.
Okay, thank you for that. So any other, any other councillor wants to say? We still need a second. Does councillor Make you seconding?
Yeah, yeah, yes, I will second councillor Borman, yes.
And you're happy with what's been said as well?
Yes, I was actually just going to say just that I don't think we can say anything about house prices. I'm afraid that's completely irrelevant to to this particular issue. I understand people might be very upset if they did lose value, as Lisa and her partner have said, but I'm afraid that that's not, doesn't come into this equation at the moment, I don't think. Thank you.
Okay, councillor Borman, are you happy to take the reference of house prices off the recommendations? I think, I think, yes, although you want to unmute yourself?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay, less desirable is fine, but we won't actually mention, as you said, the world house prices. I think it can get a little bit contentious in that, in that respect. So any other councillor want to, we do have obviously a proposal for objection proposed by councillor Borman and seconded by councillor Me with those conditions without referencing the house prices. Does any other councillor want to speak on that? Otherwise, we'll go for the vote. Obviously councillor Borman, Wallraven's not voting at all, as we know. So no one else wants to speak? So all those are favour of, on the objection to what's been just said?
One, two, three.
Oh, I see, sorry. I can't find myself, sorry.
One. Councillor Law voting, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. With councillor Wallraven not voting, that's unanimous. Can I just clarify a few points that
Come on, yeah, a few bits gone, yeah.
Frame the objections. So traffic concerns and parking concerns obviously included. Um, what about security? I mentioned about the security and the police, you know, the general sort of concerns about the security of the house and inadequacy of the testimonials or the supporting information. Should that also be included in the objection? Because I think I was clear that it should include traffic, parking, inadequate recreational space and facilities, et cetera. It should not include, and noise and disturbance, general effect on amenity it should include. But the two I had a doubt about were the testimonials or the inadequacy of the supporting information and the concerns about security. So on those two points, is it the councillors wish that they go forward as part of the objection? So I should have, I should have tried to make this clear before the vote.
Yeah, because the detail over security will come out at the next stage, won't it, in a lot of ways?
Hmm, well, if I, I mean, you can express concerns about security. Uh, you know, we heard concerns about from the, from Lisa and about the um problems with the other premises at Pleasant House, is it? And so you can say there's, that they were, there's concerns about security and also concerns about the inadequacy of the supporting information? I mean, is that something that you want mentioned, as I say? Because it was raised by the objectors, but it hasn't been mentioned at all by the members.
Yeah, but there does seem to be a certain amount of applicants' information missing for you, maybe we would probably expect at this stage. But councillor Borman, do you want to come back?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Um, I think the not enough supporting material was mentioned by some of the objectors. And when you read the applicant's, because they put in a um a submission online, um, trying to appease the objectors. And one of the things that she did state in um that was that she would provide within the next day certain information which she still hasn't actually provided. So she hasn't provided the information that people have been asking for after saying she would. So I do think it is not enough supporting evidence.
Lack of, lack of information and lack of lack of response to matters raised by the objectors.
Yep.
Right, and, and also concerns about security as well. So I'll make reference to those in, as part of the objection. But obviously, the main points, I think, were lack of recreational space, traffic and parking, noise and disturbance and general effect on amenity of residents in the area. Is that okay?
Yeah, the pre-application um report said to give as much information as possible and they haven't.
That's right. And also that request it goes to committee. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much. With that, if that's the end of this item, if members of the public would like to leave the meeting, they're welcome to do so at this stage before we make, we go to the next item, which councillor Wallraven will be taking over. So just hang on about a minute if you want to exit. And then councillor Wallraven will take over.
Thank you, councillor Honeyman. And we go on to next agenda. Application is LW stroke two zero stroke zero seven three eight five Chimpeton Road. Is erection of a two-storey rear extension, including balcony, front entrance porch, single-story detached garage, new roof over existing front dormer and ground floor bay window. Insertion of four by three, um, sorry, I'm getting tongue-tied tonight. Four by roof lights, change to external facing materials and erection of a new garden walls. Um, any members of the public like to comment on this application? And I open it up to the committee. And I suggest we might do this in two sections. Uh, because I think we might come up with maybe two different answers here. So if we can concentrate on the actual um uh, extension regarding the property and then we'll go on to the garage as a separate. If all members are happy with that. So who would like to lead on this? Councillor Borman?
Thank you, Chair. Um, the plans for the actual house itself, I don't have any issues with. Um, obviously, archaeological reports and studies do obviously need to be done because of what could be on that site and that first before any work is done. But with the extension to the house itself, I was quite happy with that.
Thank you. And any other comments on this? No, do you want to comment on the, on the garage, councillor Borman? As you've got the floor.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, my concern was the garage. It would be a loss of light into the property. Um, it seems to sit so close to the road that actually you wouldn't be able to see out the as you pull out of the garage, you wouldn't be able to see on to the, before you pulled out, you'd be on the road. So it's actually quite dangerous. Um, that's all I can think of off the top of my head.
Uh, are you going to make a proposal?
I'd propose that we don't support the garage.
Okay. Uh, councillor Make?
Um, thank you, Chair. Yes, I endorse that. I don't think we ought to. Mainly because I think it's, it's out of character with the rest of the houses in the road at that point. It puts the building right onto the pavement almost, and I think that spoils the appearance of it irrespective of whether it's a, you know, a safe or hazardous thing as well. So I think it changes the aspect completely. Uh, and I, I think it would be very detrimental to the area. Thank you.
And you second councillor Borman? So we're looking at that we support the um uh, the extension to the property in principle. And, but we um object to the, to the erection of the new garage. Um, does any other councillor want to comment? Councillor Honeyman?
Yes, I agree with the garage situation. And as we're only, only supporting the application. application generally, we are allowed to split, aren't we? What, you know, split this, what's in front of us and ignore the garage, can't we? And so we object to it. That's allowed, isn't it? It's part of the, yeah.
Yes, I mean, it can be, it can be refused solely on the basis of the, of the garage, in which case I think the, the household would have to sort of submit them separately if he wanted to extend the house, but he would get an automatic consent. So, you know, that's, it, it's, there's nothing wrong with putting an application in for the overall scheme, both elements of it, but they can make a split decision on it because there are two separate elements.
Councillor Honeyman?
Yeah, yeah, thanks for that. We come back. Yes, obviously, the bulk of the work's at the back of the property, isn't it, after that? So, in that sense, I'd be happy with what we said and not really support the garage, but the rest of it's fine. So.
Councillor Edson, do you want to speak?
Yeah, yeah, Chair, thank you very much. It's just that looking at the front elevation of the plans, the garage doesn't actually take the light away from the house. It's built into the slope of the front garden. Now, whether you consider that that garage is too close to the pavement, obviously, that's another consideration. But I don't think the garage is taking away light from the house. It's just taking advantage of getting away, getting rid of the slope of the garden and, you know, putting the garage there.
I think the garage, if the garage was passed, I think it would come about, in my language, two feet above, above the, the front lawn. I think I've worked it out. So, but it's, it will set, you know, it'd be dominant as far as the street scene is concerned. So.
Yes, I think it's clear that it won't be as dominant as it could be with a house that's on a level. You know, these houses are quite a steep bank, but all those banks are sort of terraced rockeries. And I think councillor Meek's point about the effect on the street scene is probably the main one. It's not as dominant as it, we had one a few months ago, East Albany Road, which was quite dominant in a sort of a much flatter situation. There's no doubt that a garage could fit in here, but there's no other garages, as councillor Meek has said, in this line of houses. It's, it's close to, but not within an area of established character in the neighbourhood plan. The area of established character starts at the junction of South Down Road, which is a few yards along. The crossroads leads up to the golf, the golf club. That's where the area of established character starts. So, this little stretch of Chington Road is, is not designated, but it's still, it, it, there hasn't been a garage put there yet, and the gardens are still quite neat terraced, rockery-type gardens. So, it would have an impact on the street scene, I think.
Could you, could you also say that it's exceeding the building line?
Well, that will, that will come into the, the planner's consideration of it. You know, anything, anything in front of the building line is sensitive. I think it's a question of, of dominating the street scene and doing away with an attractive, attractive banked garden, which the others have got. I think, you know, you can sympathise with a household because there's no prospect of any off-street parking, which there usually is with houses around here. Usually, you manage to get a couple of the houses off the street. And, you know, obviously, the household is keen, like everybody, to, not to have to rely on on-street parking. But the, the lay of the land just doesn't really lend itself to, to this garage, or at least I think that there are, it may get through, but I think there are valid, there's a valid objection to the, to the garage. It's not the worst thing that's ever been put forward, but I think it's, if, if there is concern about it, I think it's worth making an objection on. There's enough weight there.
Really, we've got to reject this application just purely on the garage, haven't we?
If we, if we reject it purely on the garage, obviously, that implies that the rest is okay, and that they'll take, they'll take it as read.
Yeah, and in principle, we, we support the, the extensions on the house. Yeah. Is that okay councillor Borman? And councillor Meek? Yep. So, can I have a show of hands of objecting to this application on the, on the garage, but we support, support in principle of the extensions on, on the property? Can I have a show of hands, please? I think that's you. Moving on to LW stroke two one stroke zero zero one three eighty-one Sutton Road. Erection of a single-storey rear extension and side dormer. Any members of the public like to comment on this application? And I open it to the committee. Who would like to lead on this one? Anybody? Councillor Lord?
Yes, I think we should support this application. It's quite straightforward.
Thank you. And does that find a seconder? Thank you councillor Meek. Any, any other comments? So, can I have a show of hands of supporting this application?
One, two, that's unanimous.
Yep. Planning application is received in week commencing the 25th of January. LW stroke two zero stroke zero nine zero three Rodmell House, Rodmell Road. Any members of the public like to comment on this application? Open to the committee. Who would like to lead on this one? Councillor Borman?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I didn't see any issues with this application, and I'm quite happy to support it.
Thank you. Councillor Meek?
Yeah, generally, I thought it was supportable. I think it's quite a large extension, but I guess the land volume can kind of take it. If other people don't think there's an objection to that, I, I, I would, it seems to be innocuous to me.
Thank you. You're seconding this councillor Meek. Any other comments?
I think it was, as councillor Meek said, it's a large extension but a large plot. And I, I did like the fact that they were very open about the percentage increase in floor area. They, they didn't try and hide the fact. I think it's a 39% increase. But on such a property, on a large plot, it's obviously, whereas on a normal-sized plot, normal-sized property, it would be probably over the, slightly over the top. On this property, it, it wasn't, and the plans were quite good. And as I say, they were very open about the extent of the extension.
Thank you. So, I'll put it to the vote that we support this application. Can I show hands, please? That's unanimous.
That's unanimous. Thank you. Paul, did?
LW stroke two zero stroke zero eight six nine thirty-nine Orfiston Road. Proposed single-storey flat roof side stroke rear extension and new side-facing window to form a larger open-plan kitchen stroke dining area and home office area. Any members of the public like to comment on this application? Open to the committee. Who would like to lead on this one? Councillor Borman?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Looking at this application, it's kind of filling in mainly a gap that was at sort of at the side of the house. So, Meek just squaring it all off, enlarging some of their areas. And then the study, they're putting in a, a window and moving it to the other side. So, it's got a window for their study rather than no window. So, I'm quite happy to support this application.
Thank you. Does that find a seconder? Thank you councillor Everden. Any other comments? So, I'll put it to the committee to support this application.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Councillor Honeyman? Eight. Thank you. That's unanimous.
LW stroke two zero stroke zero nine zero four, one, two, three Clementine Avenue. Conversion of garage to form annex subservient to the existing house. Any members of the public like to comment on this application? Open to the committee. Councillor Edson?
Yeah, I don't see any, anything about this application that we shouldn't support.
Thank you. And does that find a sector? No.
You said it, councillor.
Councillor Lord?
Yeah.
Do you want to speak on it?
No, I second it. It's a nice straightforward extension. I support the application. Thank you.
Councillor Borman?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I wouldn't actually support this application because if you look at the size of it, it comes out, I worked this out correctly, just over thirty-one and a half square feet. Now, the minimum requirement for a one-bedroom is between thirty-seven and fifty, depending on whether it's a single bed or a double bed. Well, the picture shows a double bed. Even a single bed, that converting that garage is actually too small, so I cannot support the application.
Thank you councillor Borman. Councillor Meek?
Well, I, I didn't have the technical stuff at my fingertips, but I thought, I'm glad that councillor Borman did. I was just going to say, I thought it looked absolutely tiny, and I, I think it looks like it's crammed in, and the spaces themselves are really small. And I would have thought that if you were going to do something like that, it should be a studio flat, open plan or something which would give you a bit more area. But I, I also would not support it for that reason, because you, you think, you know, it's really cramped.
Jeff?
Yes, I, the thing that confused me about the application, and I don't know if concern is shared by the members, is that if you are taking quite a major step in converting a garage like this to accommodation, which is quite an investment, then it would be normal or be, it would be the usual practice to explain in the planning application exactly why you're doing it. All the applicant says is that he wants to convert his garage to an annex subservient to the main house. Well, normally, that, there would be maybe personal family reasons behind it, but you wouldn't need to go into the details. But you would expect the applicant to say that it's for an elderly relative or a, a member of the family who, who needs to be independent but also needs support. You also may expect there to be a link between the two, that these two are completely detached. So, without knowing who is going to use this as subservient to the main house, it's difficult, I think, for, to give a, to give a informed view. Also, it's quite close to the neighbouring property, hundred and twenty-one. It's almost, it almost touches both properties, but it's still separate from one, two, three, just. But it almost touches one, two, one. Houses around here are quite dense in the layout. And if it's going to be used for accommodation rather than a garage, although that involves under the building regulations, you know, some extra insulation, obviously, for a residential unit, it still might cause a bit of disturbance, extra disturbance to the next-door property that you wouldn't expect from a garage. I'm not saying that these points are fatal, but it's just unusual not to explain why you actually want to take the step of turning your garage into an annex like this. And obviously, there's the fact that it is quite restricted. If it is to be a true annex, just to give somebody some independence, but that, but that person won't be totally dependent on that, those living, that, that living unit, that will, they're also, you know, linked to the family living in the large house, then that might explain, that might justify using that's quite small space for it. But I'd suggest that without knowing why, it's difficult to give an informed decision. But that, that's just my view. Obviously, you know, the, if you want to object based on, based on size alone, that's a valid objection. But maybe a request for a bit more information or concern of the lack of information might be raised as well.
Thank you. Councillor Everden?
Yeah, it was, it, it actually, Geoff touched on something there that I, I was slightly confused about this application. When I initially looked at it, I thought it might be for, you know, an expanding family or perhaps two kids and, you know, they're at an age where you have to separate them. So, you know, rather than have people forced to sell their houses or whatever, or live in crowded, just convert the garage, which I wouldn't be against. But what, it might be my, my lack of experience in planning, but I was interested in the word they used subservient to the main house. And that made me feel like it was almost a separate dwelling rather than part of the family home, and that I wasn't sure if they were going to actually be using it as a form of a bedsit. And that made me feel like perhaps it was someone moving into it rather than, you know, trying to expand the space you use for your family. So, I don't know if Geoff can clarify for me, under what circumstances people usually describe something as subservient or what that means, because it made me feel like it was a separate part from the house.
I think they've used the word subservient because they realise that unless it was described as subservient, which means it's dependent to a certain extent on the main house, then, then it won't get permission. If it, if it's put forward as a separate studio flat, it wouldn't get permission because it would be subdivision of that plot. There would be no separate garden. The access would be shared. So, it's not suitable for separate occupation on size as well. So, they obviously intend it, as, as councillor Everden said, for adult children who for some reason, you know, can't, can't get their own property, need to live at home, could be, could be an adult child with, with difficulties who needs support, but nevertheless needs independence as well. Or it could be an elderly relative, the granny annex type thing, where the person has a certain amount of independence and likes to have their own kitchen and bathroom, but would still be dependent, if you like, on the main dwelling because the people there would be looking after him or her, welfare, safety and everything like that. It's just that that sort of thing is usually explained. And you don't have to go into the personal details, just a general, just a general idea of why it's being used, you know, whether it's elderly relatives, young adults or from the family or whatever. So, as I say, that's, that's the, that's the mystery. If it's, if it's, it can be used as a separate unit. If it were to be used as a separate unit and let out, then that's against policy. Because, as I say, it hasn't got the facilities for that. Yeah. So, the only way to get away with having no garden separate is, is if it's tied to the main house, and we haven't got that evidence.
Thank you. Councillor Meek?
I was just going to suggest Airbnb.
Possible. Would it have to have a change of use if it was a B and B?
It wouldn't, it wouldn't get, it wouldn't get away with the Airbnb even, even as holiday accommodation. If it's separate from the house, then it should have its own amenity space. So.
Councillor Honeyman?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I'm looking, looking at the map now. And you obviously get access, oh, it's on a hill still, isn't it, at that stage, isn't it, on Clementine? So, so when you get access to the neighbours, like one, two, one, I mean, they still have to go round to the right to get to their garage, which would be almost like doubling back or going past the house and doubling back on their garage, wouldn't you? That's how that works. And then, then obviously, the neighbours, there's a couple of properties up to the, to the top. All the garages seem to be separate up there as opposed to the tax for the house. You'd have to, you'd either have to do a condition basically that it has to be, it can't be separate. We could, we could support it in, in that it can't be separate, a standalone entity. But, but I said, like, like the other councillors, as I said, councillor Meek, it's, and councillor Borman, it's basically too small really. So, it would have to be a studio style if you're keeping it in this sort of, if you're going to try and to keep it on this sort of accommodation. But I, I am a bit worried about they not explicit enough really say about who really wants to be there as well. So, there we are.
If I, if I could make a suggestion, you can say that, that due to its size... If I could make a suggestion, you can say that, that due to its size and the fact that it's, it's not linked to the main dwelling, you, you, you could support it, but only on the basis that it's occupied by somebody, you know, dependent, dependent to a certain extent on the main dwelling rather than as a separate dwelling or something along those lines. To make, emphasise the point that it should be occupied with the house rather than separate from the house, because all, the only word we've got to sort of make that clear in the application is, is the word subservient. So if you want to make the point that as long as it is truly subservient and that, you know, it's occupied by people connected to the main house, dependent on the main house for supervision, welfare or whatever, then, then it's okay, you know, physically. I mean, perhaps something along those lines to emphasise that point.
Thank you very much, yeah.
Well, we have got on the table two, proposal that we support this application. I think it was by Councillor Edson and seconded by Councillor Lord, if I've got it the right way around. Yeah? So, do, Councillor Edson, do you want to add any more to that?
Well, all I would say is that it looks to me as though the person that did the drawings had taken consideration that the room was only six foot something wide, and they might have done better by drawing in a single bed there. You know, these other considerations, obviously, I've listened to since I said that. So I think if we could say we would support it if, and I think that's where we, where we need to go from. I don't know what, what technical thing, should we ask for drawings or, you know, of explanation of how the bedroom would be planned out or whatever? I don't know.
If you're, if you're still supporting the application, you can have what Geoff has suggested, that it remains, you know, as subservient to the house with, you know, so there is help, you know, from the house for the participant, you know, people who live there, like if it was a granny annex. What was the other point, Geoff? I didn't write it down. Sorry to come back to you.
But what, it's too small to be let out as a separate dwelling. And I mean, it, it needs to be clear that, you know, we can support it, but only on the basis that it, it's occupied by people who are either members of the family, the host dwelling, to give them some independence, or somehow dependent on the, the people in the host dwelling for welfare and support or something along those lines. But it is, it's truly subservient because it's, it's not suitable for separate occupation as it stands. So sort of give the idea that it's okay, but that, you know, you would have liked more information, if you like, that's reading between the lines. So make, just as long Louis makes sure that it is, that the circumstances behind it make it that it's going to be truly subservient to the dwelling and make that as a condition to any consent granted. Is that okay?
Is that okay, Councillor Edson?
That would suit me, yeah.
I'll come up with a, with a form of words, obviously, that the Chair can vet when she, when she vets the draft minutes, that, you know, that shows support subject to that sort of proviso about use. Okay.
Yeah, and you're happy with that, Councillor Lord?
Yeah, I'm fine with that. I just assumed, probably wrongly that. It's remember the family, it's got late teenagers, wants to move out of the house, but of independence. And I just probably wrongly assumed that's what the place was because it's, it's like we all have teenage daughters and then go on and getting older and they want boyfriends, want a bit of privacy. And that's why I support the application thing. It's just one member of the family. And, you know, girls like, boys like, it's eighteen, nineteen, twenty, they can afford a flat, they can afford students' accommodation. It would be an ideal place for a young, young adult or a student to move into, to have a bit of privacy with parents, and that's why I support the application. But that's just my interpretation of what I thought they were doing. So I could have been wrong about the background information. Thank you, Councillor.
Thank you, Councillor Lord. So I put it to the bow of supporting this application on the conditions which has been mentioned by our planning officer. Can I have a show of hands, please? And those against?
One. Carried.
Thank you. Planning application is received in week commencing Monday, the first of February. L W stroke two zero stroke zero eight four eight thirteen St Peter's Road. Demolition of existing residential care home and erection of four by three-bedroom bungalows. Any members of the public like to comment on this application? I open it up to the committee. Who would like to lead on this one? Councillor Edson?
Yes, Chair, thank you. I noticed that there was one charging point for an electric car dedicated to one of the bungalows, but I thought I saw that there was one charging point dedicated to the other three. I don't know if anyone else saw that, but I didn't, I didn't see anywhere on the plans that each bungalow had a charging point.
No.
No?
No. No, I didn't kick up on that. Any other comment, Councillor Edson?
No, no, I'm okay with that one.
Yeah, okay. Councillor Borman?
Thank you, Chair. I think that's down to Lewis District Council and one of their policies, only fifty percent of the buildings have to have it. So if there's two for four buildings, then that covers that. But what I'd like to say is, it's a shame to lose another residential care home and knock it down and turn it into bungalows. They're beautiful properties and I can't find anything to object on, but we are going to get into the future where residential care homes are having change of use, being converted into flats, being knocked down and properties building. Where are our children going to be when they need residential care homes? Because they would have all gone. But I'm happy to support it because that four properties on that site fits very nicely.
Thank you. Councillor May?
I wouldn't support this application. I think there's, I think it's far too heavily built up. You've taken all the, all, all the open space has been completely taken, and those bungalows are crammed in there. There's hardly any garden space for them. There's very narrow, just enough to park a car between the buildings. I think myself, it's trying to squeeze as much money out of, out of that site as possible, and I feel it's taking away a lot of green space because a lot of it is block paved. So I, I, I don't like that idea. There's, there's very little lawn or grass area at all. So I wouldn't support it as it is. I might support it if it was three properties, not four.
Okay. I think we've got Councillor Lord and then Councillor Evedon.
Yes, thank you, thank you, Chair. Couple of things. We're responding to Councillor Borman. The reason residential care homes are shutting is because they're unprofitable. That's the first thing. The second thing with regards to application is that, yes, it is for bungalows as opposed to three. But I think what we have to appreciate is that Seaford Town Council is a lot of pressure to achieve targets set by central government with regards to properties in Seaford, and we're lagging way, way behind what we, what our target should be. As a consequence of that, I assume that's why the developer is putting four bungalows instead of three. And of course, the developer is maximising its profit, which is a liberty to do so. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Evedon?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I sort of agree with Councillor Lord there. I think possibly the reason that care homes are closing and housing's being built is the change in demographics of the town. A lot more younger families moving in. And it is a shame to see a care home go, and I don't know what's going to happen when our children grow up, but at the moment, there's just this dire need for housing in this town. And much as it's sad to see a care home go and then these properties sort of squeezed in, I think it's, I think that it's something that the town needs. And, you know, I've got a family and, you know, it's very, very difficult to get housing.
Thank you. I, Councillor Hunnaman hasn't spoken yet, so I'll come back to Councillor Edson and then Councillor May. So Councillor Hunnaman?
Thank you very much, Chair. Yes, I'm looking, looking at the property site now. It's interesting to know if, this is obviously designated as a residential home area as part of the plan, isn't it? Neighbour plan wise as well, it would show up. So even if these four properties, who's win? Would just be a windfall? Would it go on the list, Lewis District Council's numbers? Or would it go on the Town Council numbers? Or is this just one of these ones which has not been accounted for? Because I suspect it's probably one of the ones that hasn't been accounted for, so it wouldn't go on anyone's targets. And I can, obviously, it's a shame what Councillor Lord said in the sense of very hard to make a profit out of residential homes, but that's for another day, but, and another conversation away from this committee. But it is, it's a shame that they can't. Okay, thank you.
Geoff, did you want to answer?
As far as the properties are concerned, yes, it would be a windfall. I think, I think there was a possibility of the site actually being allocated in the neighbourhood plan at one point, because I think it was realised that the Blackshington Court would like Homefield Place, you know, would be redundant or whatever you like to call it. But it was just too small a site to be, to be a housing allocation within the neighbourhood plan. Because I've spoken to Charlie Grimble about it or received his views. As far as some of the other points being raised, obviously, it's bungalows which will attract maybe more elderly people, which is probably a good reason, a good reason for the gardens to be a bit smaller. But having said that, bungalows are popular for elderly people who want to stay in the town and who want to scale down, therefore hopefully leaving a family property, small or large family property for the people that Councillor Evenden was mentioning. So, so that works as well. It is a useful windfall of four houses towards the target. The other thing to mention before the debate goes any further, I, I logged on to the website quite late on this afternoon just to check whether there was anything new on, on the, on the contentious applications. And there is an objection on this application that was logged, I think, today. And that's quite an interesting one, which I should mention anyway for, for information. The person at number nine, St Peter's Road, who backs on mainly to bungalow four, which is the bungalow with access to Furl Road. So obviously, on one, on one side of this bungalow, there will be access out to Furl Road. Quite a narrow access which comes out around about number ten Furl Road. The person at number nine at the rear is concerned that there will be a sort of wheelie bins stacked up against the back boundary of the new bungalow. Whereas she want, when it was discussed, the scheme had been discussed with the neighbours before, and when it was discussed, she wanted a two-metre strip, like a demilitarised zone, between her and the, and the neighbouring, and the new bungalow. What the developers have provided for is a quick growing row of conifers to define, to screen the boundary, if you like. And it's also mentioned that the bungalow at the rear of nine St Peter's Road will be less obtrusive than the part of the care home that was at the rear, you know, beforehand. So the objection needs to be considered, but I don't think it can be supported because I think with the, the length of the garden at the rear of nine St Peter's Road added to the length to the rear of bungalow four, and the fact that access is out to Furl Road on the other side, should not, should mean that there won't be a adverse impact, if you like, on nine St Peter's Road. So that sort of completes things really.
Right. Councillor Edson?
Yeah, I think I'd like to see three bungalows rather than four. I don't know if we've got any power in that suggestion, but also, I take the point that Councillor Mayke made about the block paving, and maybe we should ask for that to be a permeable paving, you know, save surface water collecting and stuff like that. I mean, can we make that as a condition? Or those two things, I should say.
The, you can't make three as a condition. That's, that's an objection. You can, you can suggest, you know, use of permeable, if, if, if they are minded to grant consent, suggest use of a permeable service rather than block paving. But if, if it's proposed and seconded and passed that only, there should only be three, then that, that obviously is a sort of over-development type objection. So you can't, you know, that, that will be a clear objection. But whereas the permeable service would be a suggestion for a condition.
Thank you. Yeah, we haven't got anything on the table at the moment. So, Councillor May?
So, sorry, thank you, Chair. Two, two things. I'm just going to say in response to Councillor Evedon, yeah, I mean, we, it, it may free up some family houses, but it may not because actually bungalows are very expensive. They are the most expensive things pro rata that you get because elderly people can afford them. These are three-bedroom bungalows. They're quite, you know, they will be in a reasonably high price bracket. And that's obviously the intention so that there's a lot of profit in the scheme. So, and, and, you know, you might get people coming in from outside to buy them who just want to retire to the coast. So you won't necessarily be freeing up family houses in Seaford. That's, that's one thing. And I was going to ask Geoff, if I may, Chair, when you, when someone, a developer is building something like this, with our, you know, the climate change thing, is there no kind of directive that they should be looking at services that provide for, for all four bungalows? For instance, if you had a ground source heat pump, you know, and the costs were shared out between all bungalows, this is a, this is a climate change issue that would benefit four properties that as a developer, you're, you're providing for the town, or rather, you know, you're providing. Is there any stipulation within planning regulations or incentives that you can get someone to do something like this? The other thing is they're probably just going to bung gas boilers in, and they ought to be looking at exhaust heat pumps or something like that, or, or, you know, ground source heat pumps.
I don't think there's any requirement at the moment. They might come in over the next two or three years. There's, you know, there's sort of slow progress towards that with electric charging points, you know, which is, which is now a requirement, and, but I don't think there are any requirements. I mean, nationally, national guidance points developers towards that sort of thing. But it's one thing to recommend and try to persuade, and another thing to require. And I think there's more green requirements around than there were, say, five years ago. But I think it's something they're working towards rather than actually, actually having in place. But, I mean, Councillor Lord is a local authority.
And I just want to say, I mean, bungalows or single-storey living, it's not just for the elderly, it's also for people with disabilities. So, and I know, you know, bungalows sell very quickly in this town, so there is a need for them. And with saying that, it's a shame to see a house being demolished with so much character to it. So that, that is regrettable, but it's sort of balancing up the two. I think, you know, we've discussed this quite well, and I think we need to get a proposal on the table if possible. Councillor Borman?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Well, I propose that we support this application.
Thank you. And does that find a sector? Councillor Evedon? And can I have a show of hands of supporting this application?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven in support.
And those against? Those abstaining. Those abstaining?
It's carried seven, one.
Thank you. The L W stroke two zero stroke zero eight nine three seventy eight Sawood Road. Erection of a single story front and wide wraparound extension and wheelchair accessible round. Uh, any members of the public like to comment on this application? And open to the committee? Who would like to lead on this one? Anybody? Councillor Borman?
Thank you, Chair. I saw no issues with this application and quite happy to support it.
Thank you, councillor Meek.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right. So can I have a show of hands of supporting this application?
One, two, three, four, five, six. That's unanimous supported.
Thank you. L W stroke two zero stroke zero nine zero zero twenty six Sutton Park Road. Retain ground floor and part first floor office, use class A two. Change existing shop signage, convert remaining first floor and second floor into a two bedroom self contained masonette. Change of use from A two to C three. Any members of the public like to comment on this application? Uh, Mr Greve?
Um, good evening, Chair and councillors. My name is Michael Greve. I'm the director of G3 Architecture. Um, we're looking to purchase this property. Um, we we've exchanged in it, looking to complete. And the purpose of it is basically, I'm talking right now for my garden studio. And we've been looking for a shop premises in the High Street. Uh, most people are obviously doing the reverse of this, coming out of the High Street to go home. But where we are as a company, we do a lot of local work, as you're pretty familiar seeing our drawings. Um, Rix and Kay, um, the building has sat empty um, ever since the first lockdown due to staff being furloughed. Um, so we've got an empty property there, um, that obviously we would like to make better use of. Um, um, Rix and Kay need to surrender the lease and that's what we've been going through from the legal side of things. Uh, what we're looking to do is retain the ground floor and part of the first floor. It's quite a substantial building. Uh, we're looking to move our architectural practice into the ground floor. Uh, the part we need to retain on the first floor is basically a kitchen and a toilet. Um, the kitchen, we're actually going to put into another office because we're looking to expand as a company. Um, we're looking to obviously retain employment. I employ three people, including myself. Um, the two bed masonette, um, is a free free person masonette. Um, the drawings demonstrate it's eighty four point seven metre squared. And, um, as most of you all know, the technical housing standards only require that to be seventy metre squared. They are quite vast Edwardian properties, these. Um, the shop front will will appear quite similar to that of Rix and Kay, but obviously branded with G3 Architecture, my company. Um, obviously, as everyone knows, um, there's an established precedent already set within Sutton Park Road as well as Broad Street with flats above shops. Um, we demonstrated on the on the plans, uh, cycle storage as as long as well as other things we can sort of do above and beyond, um, which is basically, there's not much we can do um, being in the town centre, but we've we've put some bird and bat boxes also on the Gable End and so on. Um, I've checked and been keeping an eye on the planning portal, uh, Lewis District Council portal, and there's been no objections received to date. Um, I'm here if anyone's got any questions, but I appreciate I can't talk. So thank you very much for your time and thank you for listening.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr Greve. Uh, now open to the committee. Councillor Borman and then councillor Evident.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Um, pre-COVID, I would have objected to this application. Yes, I know we need housing in Seaford. But we do need office space and we are short of office space, um, in Seaford especially. Since COVID hit and people working from home and things, more people have decided to let go of their office space to work from home and stay working from home. And we need the housing. So I'm actually quite happy to support this application. That's my proposal.
Thank you, councillor Borman. Uh, councillor Evident?
Yeah, I was just gonna, um, more or less say what councillor Borman said, just say that looking at it, it actually looks really sympathetically done and it's been quite thoughtfully done and I'm happy to support it.
And you're seconding that. Thank you. Uh, councillor Hunnaman, if you want to speak?
Yes, I sort of agree. I've agree with councillor Borman in a way. I think the pandemic has has changed a bit of flavour. Of course, not everyone who can work from home can, in the future, might not be able to anyway, because possibly for various issues in their various homes. So I support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? I put it to the committee that we support this application. Can I have a show of hands, please?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's unanimous. Do you want to commend the plans as Mr Greve has had to wait for so long to, uh, I'll I'll add, shall I add that you welcomed you welcomed the the plans and are happy to support them? Something along those lines.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Thank you. Uh, we move on to tree works application. Uh, T W stroke two one stroke zero zero one one stroke T P O, one farm closed. One sycamore, uh, crown to be thin by thirty percent. Two sycamores crowned between by thirty percent. And the third sycamore, removal of overhanging branches, approximately twenty percent lifting and thinning. I don't think we got any members of the public, so straight to the committee who would like to lead on this one. Councillor Lord?
Yeah, I think, um, the trees are, as I said before, they're basically like, um, uh, anything else. They need to be harvested, they need to be tended, they need to be nurtured, they need to be looked after, and they need to be, um, crown lifted or crown dropped or thinned. And basically, we've got a professional person and professional reports, and I think these trees, I support the application, the trees to be proven as necessary to be in keeping with the the environment. Thank you.
Thank you. Does that find a second, though? Thank you, councillor Edson. Uh, any other comments? So can I have a show of hands of supporting this application? I think that's unanimous. I think councillor Hunnaman had his hand up, didn't he? Yeah. Okay. Uh, agenda item five, update report. I think Geoff is wanting to speak on this one.
Bit of breaking news. Uh, I mean, there's the the five applications on the list relatively uncontroversial, all approved. No objection, but I was, um, notified just of a decision taken by South Downs National Park Planning Committee this morning. It's been in the press already, so, uh, you might know about it. The the controversial application for uh, defence, sea defence work at Coast Guard cottages um, was approved by the South Downs Planning Committee today after quite a long processing and quite a controversial uh, processing in that there were objections, quite strong objections from Sussex Wildlife Trust and, um, Natural England, who have a policy of letting nature take its course in these situations, as happened at Berlin Gap quite a time ago. Um, their their view, which was, as I say, quite controversial, and it it did make me smile when I read the report, it was a very lengthy report. And the the view that stuck 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 out, if you like, was that, uh, although people were supporting the application because it it keeps a iconic view that's nationally known view of the cottages and the Seven Sisters, keeps it sort of intact and safe. Uh, Natural England's argument was that it was the cliffs that contributed to that view rather than the cottages. So the cottages were, if you like, dispensable. Um, as I say, it made it made me laugh, but I mean, it's a it's a genuine, it's a genuine, um, feeling on their part that, uh, that that, you know, that nature should take its course. But obviously, it was balanced out against all the other considerations and the South Downs National Park Authority Planning Committee approved the application. So after a long gestation period, that those works will be will be carried out. We, as a town council, rather sort of stood in the middle, I think. We were the landowners, uh, and we had we had the sort of various factions battering us from all sides, but we, I think, we're quite wisely let the South Downs National Park Authority, who go into these things in great detail, let them decide on the on these matters rather than take too much of a part in it ourselves. So, uh, so that's so that's, um, breaking news from this morning, which may be in the local press in the next few days or maybe on television. I don't know.
Councillor Hunnaman?
Yes, I'm on the BBC website on the Sussex page as there's the classic views picture with the report, Geoff. It's on there. So it was put up about six hours ago. So if you want to read it, you're welcome to. There was quite a lot of the pathways as you as you reach the beach has been, as you know, not so good at the moment, isn't it? The actual, so that's they're going to sort all that out as well, are they? As part of the? Yeah.
Uh, you're muted.
That's it.
Yeah, I haven't. I haven't looked at the details yet. I've just been in the decision.
Councillor Meek?
Sorry, I know everyone wants to go. I'll be very quick. Just wanted to say that I did hear a few comments from people in Seaford saying that actually, Seaford Town Council ought to support things like that um, vigorously because we benefit quite a lot financially as a result of that. From, for instance, the television rights for the for, you know, that iconic view. So it is something we might perhaps ought to think about in the way that we, uh, you know, do, um, support or not support these things because actually it's part of our asset, isn't it? Uh, so just might be worth thinking about. Anyway, I'm sure we're all tired, so I will shut up now. Thank you.
I think, uh, I remember this coming before us, uh, I think it was last year. And, uh, and we've committed unanimously to support this application. So yeah, we're very conscious, obviously, of that iconic view. Thank you. Um, any other comments? And can I have a show of hands of supporting, um, of noting the contents of this report? Thank you.
Thank you.
Meeting, uh, tonight at twenty forty nine, uh, eight the ten, eight forty nine.